Good morning. I would like to bring this budget workshop to order today for June 7th. And I think we're just going to get right to it and have the supervisor elections start. It's good to see you, Julie. Chris, if you want to make introductions.
So, good morning, Commissioners. Chris Rose, Office of Management and Budget. We know our supervisor of elections and are very happy to have her here. And Belinda Amundson is back. She is the analyst that works on that. And, Madam Supervisor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Good morning. It's nice to see some of you outside of our canvassing boardroom, which is like borderline a casino where there's no windows and can't, what do you call them, clocks? And you don't know if there's daylight. So, it's nice to, nice to see some of you all outside of that environment. You all know I'm like a process freak, right? I love processes. I'm fascinated by processes. And it's not just like the mechanics of like how things work, but it's like that spark of that initial idea and then just tracing that journey from its inception to like the present. And then, honestly, like, how do we move forward from that? And I know that it's like very hard to believe, but I was not around during the signing of the Declaration of Independence. I hope, anyway. Come again? Davey. No, but wait, I got one for you because a bunch of youngsters reminded me that I've been a part of elections since the late 1900s, which was very humbling. But as you know me, I doubled down and said, well, I've also been at the turn of the century, too. So, I was like, so, there you go. But it is a little humbling to be told that you've been a part of something since the late 1900s. So, but with that, you know, elections are very dynamic. They are ever-evolving. And in my 20 years of experience, I have witnessed an ongoing transformation of the process, and it's extremely complex. Take a recent law change. So, voters are now required to complete in a form that the state had to develop to request a mail ballot. So, what seemed like a simple bureaucratic process, which people had to do to sign up for, for mail ballots, has now significantly reshaped their experience. So, I want you all to think. Do you remember the checkbox? And you check it, and you say, I want to keep voting by mail? We all remember this. We've been doing this since 2010, and here in Pinellas County, it was a very efficient, convenient, cost-effective way of renewing a mail ballot request. And now, it has been replaced by a new law and a very laborious process. This evolution isn't just limited to these types of law changes. It encompasses technology, infrastructure, and even public sentiment. While some changes are clear-cut, others require us to constantly seek ways to enhance accessibility, accuracy, and transparency. Our proposed budget is crafted in response to the rapid changes we observe and ensures we remain adaptable and resilient. Our goal extends beyond merely just conducting elections. We also strive to instill confidence in the integrity of this process. By thoughtfully allocating resources, we invest in a process that upholds transparency, fairness, and security. These are the qualities that build trust and affirm that every voice is heard. As we look toward the challenges of the future, we are mindful of the very political landscape and need to maintain public confidence. Our budget of $10.9 million supports the various pillars of our electoral process in ensuring voters have access to ballots and that we are conducting fair and secure elections. $8.1 million of our budget is dedicated to actually conducting elections. This includes a pivotal county-wide election in November, 17 municipal elections, four special fire district elections, and two community development elections. We have also allocated $1.6 million to maintain accurate voter records. This year alone, we're anticipating about 700,000 active registration records. That means processing approximately 45,000 new registrations and making 60,000 updates, whether that's name changes, address changes, things like that, to existing records. Our outreach efforts funded by $1 million aim to empower our voters through education and increased accessibility. Aligned with the mandates of federal and state law, our initiatives work to ensure that every voter understands their rights, knows how to exercise them, and feels confident in the process. This outreach is for everyone, but is particularly designed to reach voters who might face barriers, such as older Americans, individuals with disabilities, and those from diverse minority and linguistic backgrounds to support their constitutional right to cast a ballot. Furthermore, our commitment to the security of our electoral process is unwavering. This year, we have introduced a new baseline expenditure of nearly $350,000 to maintain and enhance our security posture. $50,000 of that is going to funding off-duty sheriff's deputies to assist with operational activities. This funding supports other essential initiatives, such as physical and cybersecurity measures. Indirect security costs, such as securing ballots or other election materials and equipment, just think the persons that are by our secure ballot drop-off locations, things like this, those types of costs are allocated in both our personal and operational cost centers and are not associated with what I mentioned above. Our main building, the Election Service Center, is also undergoing critical facility renovations to enhance the security and functionality of where our canvassing board meets, to make, who makes decisions concerning the disposition of ballots, who conduct the recounts, where we conduct the post-election audits, and where we count mail and provisional ballots during the conduct of the election. These improvements financed and managed by the County Facilities Department complement our effort to ensure that our operations are secure during canvassing board meetings and ballot processing. In addition to continuing our foundational commitments, we are proposing two critical non-recurring expenditures to further strengthen the robustness and efficiency of our electoral process. First, we are seeking to invest of, I'm sorry, seeking an investment of $1.7 million for the replacement of 900 electronic poll books. Initially purchased in 2014, these devices have just basically reached their end of life. Several factors are driving the need for replacement, including finding original hardware to repair when things go down, and advancing technologies just demand modern and updated equipment. These upgrades are not merely a replacement, but a strategic enhancement to maintain the operational integrity and efficiency across all our early voting sites and election day polling places. With new equipment, we can help to ensure that voter check-in is swift, secure, and Second, we are requesting $96,000 to acquire four additional audit-scanning stations. These stations are imperative for enhancing our ballot processing capacity, especially when we are anticipating a three-card, double-sided ballot. We are talking about at least an 80% turnout with 560,000 voters. That's what 80% would look like, or more. And it is vital to officially be able to scan inventory and read these complex and lengthy ballots with precision and speed. The additional audit-scanning stations will allow us to conduct legally required audit activities within mandated deadlines. This enhancement will not only ensure compliance with election laws, but will also reinforce public trust by providing a transparent and verifiable audit trail of our election results. Your support for these decision packages is crucial as we strive to uphold and advance the integrity and accessibility of our elections. These combined efforts underscore our commitment to a process that is not only transparent, but also robustly protected against threats. Reflecting on our journey from the nation's first elections to today's sophisticated processes, our commitment to improvement and adaptation remains steadfast. Just as the founding fathers laid down principles that have stood the test of time, we continue to strengthen our established electoral procedures to meet today's standards of transparency, accessibility, and security. Our efforts are not just for today's voters, but for future generations. Your support is essential to reinforcing the foundation of our electoral process. Together, we can ensure that every voter in Pinellas County is a testament to our values, that every vote, every single vote. I thank you for your partnership and your commitment, as our elections are everyone's responsibility. Thank you for your time today. Any questions, please?
Any questions for Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Julie. Good to see you, as always.
You, too.
I just wanted just to comment. I think you've done a great job of presenting your budget here and really keeping everything very much in line. Your two decision packages, I'm amazed you got 10 years out of your poll books. I mean, that's, you know, with the way technology changes, the fact that you got 10 years out of them is great. So, I agree that you need to replace those. And with, you know, with what you've said about the turnout for this coming election, I could see why you need those additional clear ballot scanning stations as well. So, those are just my comments. I mean, I'm in support of both of those, so.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning. Hi, Commissioner.
I had a couple of other questions, but you were talking about the change in the process to the vote-by-mail for our hundreds of thousands of voters that use that. Was that a state law change, or was that a rule change by the department?
So, it's a combination of both. So, as part of a legislative bill that passed, it required that there be a uniformed statewide form for requesting a mail ballot in writing. And then, it gave the Department of State rulemaking authority to create that form. So, it's both.
Okay. And when they have made that rule decision, that change on how to implement the law, is that something that the Secretary of State, do they put out a bulletin to you all? Is there a training session? How is the communicated, the changes to supervisors?
So, the rulemaking process is open to the public. There is a rules committee as part of our association that I now chair. So, the process is, again, open to the public. There are notice hearings, so to speak. The association was very active, my office, very active in providing feedback, even tried to draft a form, because it was, it's mandated. It's in statute. So, you had, they had to create a form.
Sure.
But, yeah, so, it was a process that every administrative rule has to go through.
And so, is this, and looking at your, I think, page nine on your submission, that, where did it go? We had, you estimated 200, is that 275,000 is what you estimate for the mail ballots this year?
No.
Or is that dollar amount?
I'm not sure if that's a dollar amount.
Well, let me ask you, how many, how many voters did we have vote-by-mail in 2020?
Right now, so, right now, we, in 2020, so, let me, I can walk back a little bit.
Sure.
So, right now, we have 200, about 233,000 mail ballot requests on file, which is 38% of the voter file. It would be, it would, I need to disclose that that's the lowest it's been since 2008. In the 2022 general election, our voter file consisted of 50% had mail ballot requests on file. So, that's a difference of 118,000 registered voters. So, this is something that we have whiteboarded, contemplated, you know, when are people going to become aware that their request that they had two years ago is no longer on file? Is it going to be when people start thinking about elections? Is it going to be after the primary, before the primary? So, these are things that we've, we've obviously understand that there's been a significant law change that has had an impact, not on just Pinellas County, but the entire state. So, we, again, to your credit, thank you, you approved the purchase of a, a large Canon printer that we use for, to be able to produce a higher rate of mail ballots that we have to print daily. Because I think it's really important to emphasize that in 2022, our initial mailing, so, there's like, basically, you have your initial mailing, and that's all the people who have requests on at the time before the election, right? So, that's maybe ran about 55 days prior to the election. In 2022, 95% of all the ballots we mailed was in that first mailing. And so, now, looking at that and saying, okay, since we're not even close to where we were in 2022, we're 118,000 off, what does that look like going into this fall in a presidential, not just a gubernatorial? What does that look like going into this fall? So, if you look at when we mail, which is about 35 days prior to the election and when folks will get their ballots or not, and say, where is my ballot? So, let's, let's just say that's 33 days. Where's my ballot? I got one in 2022. Where's my ballot now? Between that and the deadline to request a ballot to be mailed to you is 12 days prior. That gives us 21 days between those two periods. And I, I'm sorry, I'm a data geek, because that's all we have. We're evidence-based thinkers. We look at the data, and that's how we prepare. So, this is a big data shift for us, because it's kind of has some question marks around it. So, you have 118,000 people difference between '22 and now, and when are they going to request these ballots? So, in, if you look at the 21 days, I did the math, and that's, that's now shifting to daily mailings of about 5,600 per day, which is an increase of 218% of what we've had to do of dailies. And I just looked at some 2016, 18, 2020, and 2022. It's a 218% average increase. So, yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot of folks, which is why we are encouraging voters to please look at this as a, an election year, not just one election. Get ready now. Go on votepanalis.gov, look up your voter registration status, check to see if you have a mail ballot on file. If you don't, request one on our website, call our office at 727-464-VOTE, and get election-ready today.
So, that, yeah, I just, it's, it's mind-boggling to me why this change was made. And I wish they had looked at supervisors that had continuity and success and followed your model and made that the statewide model, as opposed to creating this brand-new thing that puts 118,000 of our voters into a situation that they shouldn't be in. Are we, are we, number of early voting sites this year? How many will we do in, for the fall of 24?
For the general election, are seven.
Seven.
And then, we'll, and that's five miles from every voter in the county. And then, our ballot drop-off locations that are manned, secured, again, the way the law is written in statute right now is the way Pinellas has done it from day one. So, we were the model that was adopted for how our ballot drop-off locations are secured. Those locations, there's 24 of them. That's within three miles of every single household. And then, please keep in mind, we have 169 polling places, which are in every single pocket of every community within Pinellas County. We are very accessible. We take that very seriously. This is a republic. People have to participate in order for it to be operational and work. So, accessibility is important to us.
And the last area I want to talk, it was the municipals. You said 17, are 17 now tied in with the traditional even-year November elections? Or, how many are off that?
So, I believe off the top of my head, we're in the five-to-seven range that hold ones in conjunction with our fall elections. I do believe that there are a handful of municipalities holding special referendum questions that are going to be added on. But traditionally, we still have the large group that will hold them in March for, as of right now.
And when you figure out the cost for the city to, you charge them to operate their election, is that fully baked of all your costs to do the election and proportional for all your other costs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the wonderful job that you do. As has already been stated, I think we have one of the best processes that there is on, you know, being, I'm sorry, I'm being partial, yeah. But I think we have one of the best processes.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
That we, that we have. And our results are typically in before anyone else's. And then, just the way that the canvassing board is managed, if there are any questions or concerns, the quickness by which you all react when there are problems, or if there are problems, I know I had to reach out once, and that was resolved like within two to three minutes to make sure that people were able to get in and vote who was in line. So, I think that was just absolutely wonderful, and just wanted to acknowledge the hard work that all of your team and your staff put in. The ladies at the front counter are always so gracious when you come in. I love your honor wall for the veterans, acknowledging why we're voting. We're voting because of who the United States is and what we stand for. So, I just wanted to say that and get that out of the way. So, my question is, unfortunately, because of the new Schedule VI being a requirement, the Form VI, I'm sorry, being a requirement, and of course, some elected officials did not support that, and they decided to resign from their office, which had nothing to do with you. You were just following rules. Would you say you incurred additional expenses because of that very quick turnaround? Some people were appointed, and then, there was a real quick turnaround special election. Did you incur, did your office incur additional expenses in order to accommodate those municipalities? I think it was like St. Pete Beach, Madeira Beach, Seminole, Osmar.
Yeah. So, the, the Form, so, there's two, Form VI is a part of candidate qualifying, or it's a part of what you have to do if you're elected as an official, just for clarification for anyone. Those are totally separate concepts from what the municipalities do, meaning the municipal clerk is their coordinator. They file, and also, as for candidate qualifying purposes, the municipalities are responsible for their candidate qualifying. So, actually, the change doesn't impact us. And to someone's, I'm sorry, someone's question about municipal costs, the county does not absorb municipal costs for conducting their elections. So, that is something that, that they would have to take care of, and, but, the, how we contract with the municipalities does not include anything to do with candidate qualifying. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome, ma'am.
Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, good morning. Good to have you here, always. So, I just want to make sure I understand these different pieces of equipment. We have the main, where we put all the ballots through, all the, and then, we have the audit system that we run them through as well. And these are audit-scanned stations. Does that have anything to do with that, where you count the ballots initially? Is this what this is, right here?
They're not the initial. So, our, under state law, you have to have, use a state-certified voting system. So, since 2007, which was purchased by the Board of County Commission, you all have purchased the ESNS tabulation system, which we've been using since. And that is what has to be used to tabulate ballots. So, once a ballot goes through that system, whether it's through the high-speed DS950s, or if you go to an early voting location or at a polling place and you put your ballot through a DS300, all of those ballots then subsequently will go through a separate, independent audit system, which is a scanner. And then, they get scanned, and then, they are kind of, they're, they're like stowed, so to speak, until we have to conduct our post-election audit. And I don't, I don't know how to express how awesome it feels to be able to put ballots through a tabulation system, put them through an entirely different system owned by entirely different company, time and time again. Because I can sit here and say, since 2020, we've conducted four machine recounts, we've conducted three manual recounts with no vote changes, and we've conducted six post-election audits. We have reviewed over 15 million ovals, and 600 were seen by the two systems differently, meaning 600 ovals out of over 15 million. And it's because the systems see the ovals differently. One system sees it from the center looking out to the oval, and the other system sees it a little bit further out. So, if there's like a voter mis-marked their ballot, the two systems may see it differently. So, if you look at that statistically, that's more than 99.999, I believe there's another nine, plus percent accuracy. And to be able to prove- And to be able to prove that unequivocally, there's no question, there's no doubt, you can see it, it's there. The ballots are in our office that anyone can come and request and ask to look at. The audit is the same thing. And to be able to have that kind of transparency and to be able to know, not just think it went well, I know it went well. Every member on the canvassing board knows it went well because it is proof, it's evidence that we had a successful, accurate, and secure election. No questions asked.
So, thank you. That was going to be my second question. You cleared that one up and I, just for folks that might be watching, about these, these that we're buying, these, these for, this General Fund 96,000, what are they?
I thought, I'm sorry, they're the scanners for the independent audit side. So in other words, what's happening is we're looking at having to process a lot of pieces of paper. And to be able to keep up with, so while we're, while we're processing mail ballots the weeks leading up to the election, for the general election, we have two weeks of early voting. So while we're processing mail ballots, the scan, the audit scanners, those mail ballots go through the high-speed scanner and then they go right to that next audit scanner. Well, while we're doing that, we also have to process probably, I mean, I mean, we've seen as high as 130-plus thousand early voters. So daily, we need to keep up with those. So we need more scanners just to keep up with it, not to mention election day, post-election, post-election day, we have to do election day so that we can do the whole audit timely.
Thank you.
But I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I also appreciate your other part, which is what I was going to ask you second. So thank you very much.
I know. We got to get you on the canvassing board. It's been a couple of years.
It has been a couple of years.
I know.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Any other comments, discussion? No? Well, it's great to see you. Great presentation as always.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And it's great to see your team back there. They do a great job. All of you guys do a great job. And, and it is always easy and a pleasure to go into your office.
And if I can say that, please, because to, to Commissioner Flowers's point, my staff, this is blood, sweat, and tears for these folks. And I get emotional when I talk about my staff because these folks, they sacrifice so much. There are so much that these folks do to make sure that this is done right and that they do it with integrity. They give up so much time with their families and their friends. And I'm just saying that these folks mean a lot and I am so grateful to each and every one of them, complimenting everyone who, who helps the public, who's counting ballots, who is at a polling place for 15 hours. I mean, everyone who's involved in this process. I mean, I'd like to just mention my chief deputy, Mark Gillette, who's with me today, and my deputy supervisor, Dustin Chase, who's with me today. This is, this is a, this is a true, these folks are a testament to what America really is. People who care about this process, want to make sure it's done right. And, and, and I'm just so grateful to be a part of a team like this.
Yeah, it's a great team, no doubt about it.
So, thank you.
And they always do it with a smile. So they do. So thank you so much. It's great to see you.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone. Thank you so much for your time today.
Okay. Next, we're going to go to Forward Pinellas.
Yep. Forward Pinellas is up next.
So has Whit and Rodney come to the table over there? Welcome, gentlemen. Natalie Steiner is the budget analyst that works with Forward Pinellas and she will be presenting again this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to preface today's presentation by highlighting that I will largely be referring to Forward Pinellas, AKA the Pinellas Planning Council, as the PPC for brevity. We will begin by discussing the PPC's efforts towards finding efficiencies, starting at the top of page two. For FY '25, the department realized savings of $425,000. Moving down to the middle of page two, we'll take a look at our topics for discussion. The PPC's millage rate was increased in FY '23 to ensure a balanced budget. That millage rate has stayed steady since then and FY '25's budget has been developed based on that millage of 0210 mills. Moving down towards the middle of page two, we will discuss our FY '25 budget drivers. Forward Pinellas has one fund, the Pinellas Planning Council Fund. The FY '25 budget excluding reserves decreases $660,000. Revenue for the PPC fund decreases $277,000 and reserves for the fund increase by 1.5 million. Personnel services decreases $263,000 due to several vacancies being filled at a lower rate, a 3% salary adjustment on the midpoint, and FRS actuarial increases were also applied. The FTE count remains flat at 18 FTE. And finally, operating expenditures decrease $397,000. That includes a $425,000 reduction to professional services. Now I will turn the presentation over to Whit and Rodney to discuss the PPC's FY '24 accomplishments.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Pleasure to be here. Rodney Chapman is my deputy. Just wanted to little, talk a little bit about how we're operating and some of the accomplishments we've had. As you know, we are the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Pinellas County, so we have a transportation planning responsibility. And I think significantly, in the past year, we submitted a report to the legislature looking at the possibility of forming a regional metropolitan planning organization for Tampa Bay, including Pasco, Hillsborough, and Pinellas County. That report was largely led by our efforts at Forward Pinellas. It included a memorandum of understanding that has been adopted by all three MPOs, generally has been endorsed by the county commissioners, although that'll come back. The, I haven't gotten any feedback on the report to the governor and the legislature, but I think we satisfied the requirements from the 2023 session in submitting that. And we continue to make steady progress in thinking through what that organization might look like, how it might function, the role of the smaller cities. We have a bunch here in our county. The role of the transit operators, the size of the governing board, all those things, I think we've found some consensus on. The small cities will be something we'll discuss in September of this year. So that will continue. That'll be a big effort in the coming year and that will be a major accomplishment if we can pull that off because that's something this region has lacked, is a cohesive approach to transportation as we grow as rapidly as we have. Another major accomplishment this past year that will continue into the beginning of next year is the adoption of our Long Range Transportation Plan 2050. And we don't just look at the horizon year of 2050. We look at allocating transportation projects based on the revenues that we project to receive in five-year increments, leading to the year 2050. We have developed a draft, what we call Cost-Feasible Transportation Plan, based on Penny for Pinellas anticipated revenues, sales tax revenues, gas tax revenues at the state, local, and federal level. And the good news is there's plenty of revenue coming into Pinellas County. The challenge we have is the timing of setting priorities and getting those projects done. That plan will be adopted in October of this year. We are planning to continue to do public outreach. There's been a heavy lift and a lot of public engagement across the county as we develop that plan. And, and I'm excited about the future of Pinellas County with the projects in that transportation plan. Another major accomplishment that's still ongoing, but we, we are launched, is the update of the Countywide Multimodal Transportation Impact Fee Ordinance. This is a county ordinance. It has really been lagging in terms of keeping up with the pace of growth and redevelopment and has not been maintained very well over those years. So it's in need of a refresh. And we've got funding at the request of the county administrator from the larger municipalities, St. Petersburg, Largo, and Clearwater, all contributed, along with our funds and, and some county funds. And we have begun to kick off that effort. And we really started it, and I credit Rodney and our staff, by doing a lot of one-on-one meetings with everybody from economic development to OMB and Public Works to understand what the update would entail because there's a lot of moving parts in how we look at assessing developers for transportation impacts. I feel really good about all that. We are continuing to implement the Gateway Master Plan that we adopted back in 2019 and that will have a huge impact on county operations going forward because one of the main catalyst sites that we identified was the Icot Center on Ulmerton Road at US 19, the future home of Pinellas County government. So there's a lot that we need to continue to work on to achieve the goals of that Gateway Master Plan that all the local governments, Largo, Pinellas Park, St. Petersburg, and Pinellas County endorsed. We have been working with St. Petersburg on implementing the Target Employment and Industrial Land Study that we completed a year ago to address the Warehouse Arts District and development around the Sunrunner Station at 22nd Street South. So there's a lot of good things happening in Pinellas County. And we have also been tracking the Live Local Act and the effect it has on preemption for housing as part of our countywide housing compact we're doing in partnership with Pinellas County. We have a Live Local Affordable Housing Dashboard that we've created. I'm a big believer in dashboard and data as well. And helping people understand the impacts of those preemptions on local authority and local land use control and what that may mean for us in terms of achieving our goals for affordable housing in Pinellas County, I think it really helps to, to see that. We've also created an interactive transportation improvement program where anybody in the public can go to our website, look at the transportation projects that are funded in the next five years, whether they be funded for design or construction or operations, and they can see what those projects are, they can see how much money is being spent on those projects, and they can see the limits of those projects and, and what's affected. We've worked really hard to keep our budget lean. We are, we do have some reserves. Those reserves are important working capital that we use to match federal grants and state grants. It's also something that we may need as we merge the MPOs because there are a lot of unknown costs associated with that. We're going to have to figure out office space, we're going to have to figure out equipment. We may not, we may be an independent organization and not hosted by an agency like the Pinellas Planning Council. So as we consider those things, we do need funding flexibility and that's why we have those reserves. So unless Rodney, anything I forgot that you want to add, I'll turn it over to you all for questions. Thank you for your time.
Questions? Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
You may not know the answer to this, but.
Microphone, please.
I pushed it, I'm sorry. You may not know the answer to this, but a few meetings that we've had with the Tampa Bay, at the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, just talking about the partnership and the extension of Brightline into Hillsborough County and whether or not there may be some collaboration for those transportation hubs, much like PSTA has off of the exit of 275 on 22nd Avenue to pick-up location, drive over, because they have that in South Florida, Brightline does. Have you guys been approached by anyone from Brightline, Hillsborough County, TIA or anything in regards to maybe start working on some language about a partnership and how that transportation may work so that our residents could take advantage of the services that are going to be phenomenal, you know, once it hits Hillsborough, to be able to go to Disney, you know, follow up the coast to Orlando, get south to Miami or Fort Lauderdale or whatever?
Great question. Yes, we've been, I won't say approached by Brightline. Brightline's a private company and they are, they keep a lot of things close to the vest. They are focused on building transit stations, I believe in Cocoa Beach and in the Treasure Coast right now. And there's still a lot of uncertainty about when and under what conditions they'll come to Hillsborough County. But in January of this year, I did a trip with the Tampa Bay Partnership and the mayor of Tampa and many elected officials and representatives from Hillsborough County to Miami. We flew down there, rode Brightline to Orlando, we met with Brightline officials, and there's a lot of enthusiasm. I mean, I've, I've heard it across Pinellas County, across the region. And we're going to be prepared. We are working with the Florida Department of Transportation and other partners to have a plan in place, including PSTA, when Brightline makes that decision and, and has a timeline for coming to Tampa. Park and ride and express bus service would probably be the cheapest way to do it in the, in the beginning stages. The Howard Franklin Bridge is being built to specifications to, at some point, support a, a light rail system. But that's going to take an enormous lift and a lot of money that we don't have. So for now, we're focusing on express bus service.
Okay. Thank you. I had a chance also, I was invited by former Senator Constantine, now Commissioner Constantine, and we had a chance to go down and ride the line all the way to the end, stop and back and meet with the owners. And it was, it's a fabulous ride. It's a really nice train, not to mention the economic vitality that they bring with the starting salaries for those who actually drive, the conductors who drive the train and then those people who, I'm, I'm going to call them stewards, I don't think that's the name that they call them, but provide you with the service.
Right.
As you go along, starting at about 60,000. So it's, it'll be interesting but really good. But I hope that they remain in touch with us so that we're ready. Because, you know, sometimes things move fast, slow, fast, slow. And now that TBARDA isn't around to be in the mix or middle, then I would be, you know, looking at Forward Pinellas for all of that information.
Well, and I think that's an important point. With the demise of TBARDA, we've really recognized we're going to have to step up and the MPOs are going to have to take a more of a leadership role that fill that void. Just one more thing about Brightline. Next week, on the 14th, I've drafted a resolution that I'm taking to the joint meeting of all the MPOs along the I-4 corridor. There's 10 of them, from Volusia County, Space Coast, Orlando, Polk, and then our region, including Sarasota, Manatee, Hernando, and Citrus. So it's a bunch of us. That resolution calls for an investment in passenger rail in the I-4 corridor. And not just Brightline, but Amtrak as well, because there are two different markets. Brightline is not really public transportation. They're competing with the airlines, so they're priced like you would pay for a flight. Amtrak would be a more affordable option and Amtrak has expressed a lot of interest in working with the state of Florida, like they do with 21 other states, to develop intercity passenger rail service. And Florida has an adopted passenger rail system plan that recognizes that, but it's going to take legislative authority to make that happen. So that resolution, I think, will be endorsed and you'll have all 10 MPOs speaking with one voice for the I-4 corridor because if you drive I-4, we need options.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Leppel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all both for being here. On page six, there's a couple stress tests, 3% and 5%. Can y'all talk just briefly about both of those and what impact, if any, that would have?
Sure. I'll let you take the lead on that one.
Thanks, Commissioner. Well, the first stress test, it's here. We worked with OMB to look at our, what is called lap savings. So we look at our personnel costs and look at the actuals. And so we looked at a three-year period of what we actually paid our staff versus what, what was budgeted. And we found there was a, a difference there. And so what we're able to just calculate, that if we were to bring down those staff salary costs by a bit, that we would still be able to pay our staff the actual wages compared to what was been historically budgeted over that three-year period. For the 5% test, we looked at not only those personnel lap savings, but we also looked at our cost for legal advertising. So as the planning council, we're required to publish ads for map amendments in the Tampa Bay Times. And in an analysis, analysis of the costs that we have incurred to place those ads in the, in the paper, we found that we were, we could budget less and still meet that advertising requirement. And so we, we dropped, we could drop that number down as well. And the last item we looked at was what we call council activities. So some of the commissioners who have been on our board for a number of years have participated in some more. in some more externally facing events. So we've had legislative forums at Wrigley Hall, we've had peer community fact finding going to Indianapolis, Indiana. We've done some of those things over time, and they're really more nice-to-haves versus have-to-haves, and so we looked at further reducing that council activities line item to meet the stress test requirement.
Because when I looked at it, especially the 3%, it looked like there would really be no impact, and the 5% would be very minimal. So I just wanted to get your take on that, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, so maybe just take a minute or two to talk a little bit about that regional MPO, the makeup of it, which is different than Tampa Bay Water. Tampa Bay Water, we have three counties, the same three counties. We have, it's evenly split between the three counties. So there's three from Pasco, three from Hillsborough, three from Pinellas. It works really well. It's kind of like the Senate version of our, of our Congress. And then you go to the MPO side, or the, it becomes more like the House of Representatives, it's done by population. So talk a little bit about that and what your thoughts are in terms of making sure that not one county has a majority anytime they want. I mean, that's important, I think.
It is, it is. So we're governed by federal law and state law when it comes to the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Sometimes they conflict, usually they're pretty consistent. In federal law, we are required to put a governing board together apportioned by population. And so when you look at that, Hillsborough County has a lot more population than Pinellas or Pasco. Together, though, I think when we look at a 25-member board, the way, right now, the consensus is, is that the regional transportation authorities, and those are the Port Tampa Bay and the Airport Authority, would have seats on the board that are voting, but they would not be elected officials, they would be staff, and they would not be counted against Hillsborough's number of apportioned votes. And that's because those organizations really are regional organizations, and they're not Then we would have about eight or nine seats for Hillsborough County, we would have seven or eight seats for Pinellas County, and you'd have five or six seats for Pasco. That still needs to be worked out. I think the goal would be not to have one county with 51% of the voting members. But, you know, that might entail that two of those seats where that doesn't happen would be Hillsborough County, but they would just be the Port Authority or the Airport Authority, but they tend to think regionally. So I think that, that's one way to work it out. The other question is, we have 24 cities, and right now, they're all represented on Ford Pinellas. Some of them are represented in rotating seats. I don't think we would be able to get down below, say, the city of Clearwater or the city of Largo, to have a voting seat on the board. So the next step is to think about, do we have rotating seats that represent the smaller cities across the region? And that might be something in favor of Pinellas County, because we have so many. There's only a few in Pasco and only three in Hillsborough. So that hasn't completely been worked out yet.
Any other questions? So I have a question. So it looks like you want to double your reserves this year. It looks like a 90% increase in reserves, if I'm reading that right, Chris? Okay. So, you know, we've got an expectation from the county that we look at a small rollback, because over the last so many years, we have been taking in a whole lot of money. And, and I don't know if an MPO, Chris, if the standard is 14% to 17% in reserves, it appears they've got 44% in reserves. Isn't standard practice more like 14% to 17% in reserves, not 44% in reserves? So what is the best practice? I understand you're looking for match dollars. I understand, I heard you say that. But is there a standard, just like there is for regular government, on something like this with an MPO?
I don't know of a standard for an MPO. I can research it, but I don't know of one.
Okay.
Just to be clear, those reserves are not MPO-related. That's the...
They're not what related?
They're not related to the MPO. The MPO is all federal grants, and we are reimbursed at 100%.
Okay.
So whatever we spend, we are reimbursed for.
So, so why do we need to double our reserves in one year?
Well, it's not that we need to double those reserves. Those reserves are accumulated reserves from prior years, and what we were doing with the millage increase two years ago was making sure that our revenues matched our expenditures. And they are doing that now.
Okay. So I got that, and that was two years ago. And last year, everything got maxed out, because property values went up so high. This year, we're pretty close to maxed out, because property values are still high. And so I just, to double your reserves, I mean, we hear every day about how people are having a hard time affording groceries, affording, granted, you take a small reduction, it doesn't play out to be, you know, enough to pay for their dinners, but it's still the concept, and we, we have expectations here, that we're going to take a rollback, some kind of rollback. And I just, I guess I'm uncomfortable with doubling the reserves just because, just because, in a, in a time when there's economic strife, and so I've got real concerns about that. That, I'm very uncomfortable with that.
I just want to point out that a lot of that is for projects that are, that were budgeted in this year, but they haven't gotten started yet. Like the multimodal impact fee, we are not yet paying the consultant for that work. We laid the groundwork at a staff level with all those meetings over the last six months, so that's been a little slow to get going, but...
But wouldn't that be in your budget, not in your reserves? Wouldn't that be in your budget? If you have a consultant to pay this year, that should be in your budget. We shouldn't be planning on paying on consultants out of their reserves that way. It should be, if you know you're paying that consultant this year, that should be in your budget. So I'm, I'm, I've got some concerns about this, and, and I'm sure Barry's going to educate me a little more about it.
No, Commissioner, you're correct in terms of reserves. Now, we have, they have buildup. That way, as their salaries go up, then you don't have to make adjustments, you know? And so they've done that over a few years. What I was kind of mouthing back and forth to Chris is there, they've got in a base amount of 3%, okay? Sal, as we've discussed, salaries probably will be a little bit higher, so that'll hit the reserves when we increase that amount. They've built in the 3%. When we decide on the ultimate salary, it'll probably be a little higher, and so that, that will decrease the reserve sum. I just don't know how much.
Again, the unknowns with the merger of the MPO and the match for the grants.
I heard all that, I heard all that, but we've been talking about that merger of MPO for 10 years, maybe?
Thirty years.
So, so that, so that doesn't, that, that's not playing for me, because we've been talking about that for a long time.
When we come back in August...
And I'm just, I'm just looking at a doubling your reserves in one year, and I'm uncomfortable with it. And this, this not, this isn't new for me. I've been uncomfortable with things like this before, at a time when there's economic strife. I just, I, I'm having difficulty with it. And, and just like everybody else is looking for a 3% on their midline base, are we doing that through reserves, Barry? Because that's kind of what you just said for them, so why would it be different?
No, but they operate as a separate fund. So if we increase their expenses, then the reserve comes down, right? And, and so, but we can bring you back ideas. We can bring you back ideas on levy amounts, we can bring you back, but like, we can build in the cost of the, what we ultimately decide on salaries, and then we can show you that, and then we can show you...
Okay.
Okay? If you, if you do this reduction or this rollback...
I would be much more comfortable with that.
Then, then ultimately, you, it's your budget, so you can decide, and we can bring that for you in August.
Okay. I don't know if Annalisa agrees with that, but I, I'm not comfortable with it, so I would love to hear that.
I can't stop.
And have you come back with some other, or some maybe better explanations that helps me feel more comfortable.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you. So what I heard, though, was that a portion of that is, and I don't know what your terminology, we would call that a carryforward from the previous budget year.
That's right.
That would, might get eaten up October 2nd, if you actually expend the funds from a previous budget year. Is that, am I hearing that right?
That's accurate.
And do you have any idea what amount that is, a percentage, or?
I don't know if I have that off the top of my head.
I mean, you don't have to give any, but, so it, it may not be as, as large as you're seeing on the paper there, as far as just carryover, just hanging reserves to hanging reserves, so.
No, I'm just like, I'm trying not to...
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Witt, if you've got, you know, a list of projects to where you can, you know, show us to where that money may end up going, would probably be helpful as well. Thanks.
But I wouldn't hang an eye on that merger happening next year. Like I said, we've been talking about that for 10 years, and I don't think we have to stockpile money and say, it's better to have taxpayers' money in our bank account than in their bank account, because maybe one day this will happen. I just don't think that's good practice, so, but I do appreciate, Barry, if you would do that. Commissioner Eggers, it looks like you have a comment. And I'm not served on, on, on this, so I probably need more education on, because I've never served on Ford Pinellas, so, and thank you for that.
Well, first of all, I can't, can't let the conversation go without this reserve conversation, and, which is, the arguments that you're making is the ones that I was making last year when we were talking about our own reserves being above what the standard is. The standard for financial directors in this, in this country is at 16.7%, not 20.8%. I just couldn't let that go, sorry. But to this point, I agree with you. I do, I'm part of it, to make sure that we have a full understanding on what those reserves are set aside for. To the comment that you made about the regional aspect, it has been an idea, a thought, a, a passing fancy for a lot, a long time. It is, right now, we are trying to line up with what the state House and state senate and the governor's office is wanting us to do. So this, this movement now is not a passing fancy. The work that's being done right now, Commissioner Long and Councilmember Driscoll and myself represent the, the regional discussion that's going on, it's different. It's, and, and it's, and what we're trying to put forward in, you know, working with the other counties, is what the state is asking us to do. So three years ago, they asked us to come up with a project in the region that was really important, and this county said, the State Road 60, I-275 interchange is, is the number one. And so they asked us to come together as a region to pick a project, and we got it. And that's the, and that was the impetus for us really making that change in thought and direction, and making the regional MPO more of a reality. And so it's not, I have no interest in just having this fun, in hours that we're spending on it, if it's not going in line with what the state's doing. And that's why they sent an update to the, to the state on where we are, to make sure that we're kind of moving in the direction that they want us to. So it is more real now. I still would like a breakdown of what those reserve increase are marked for. I think that's a great question. And I like the scrutiny on reserves. It's really refreshing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thanks. Appreciate it, and I look forward to hearing more in the future. Okay. And then we're going to move on to Building Development and Review Services, including Contract Licensing Department.
So Commissioners, you know Kevin and Michelle over at the department table, and Belinda is back for her second one of the day. She is the Budget Analyst for BD RS. I'll give her just a minute longer to get everything in order. She's going to start presenting. This is, again, a county admin department, so we will, we will go back to the model of presenting back and forth. So, Belinda?
Thank you, Chris. Good morning again, Commissioners. My name is Belinda Amundson. I'm with the Office of Management and Budget. Beginning at the top of page two, under efficiencies and cost-saving measures, the department has reduced their FY '25 budget by more than $104,000 through efficiencies. In FY '24, the department reduced their budget by nearly $152,000. And in FY '23, the department made reductions to their budget by nearly $100,000. Moving on to topics of discussion in the middle of page two, legislation is impacting the Contractor Licensing Department significantly in FY '25. The overall impact is an anticipated reduction of over $382,000 in revenue. To compensate for the decrease in revenue, FTE is decreasing by three total, one of which is shifting to Building Services, as well as a decrease of more than $18,000 in operating expenses. Development and Review Services is proposing a new fee schedule that would increase fees gradually over the next three years. It's expected to increase revenue by $208,000 in FY '25 alone. Moving to the top of page three, Building Services is reducing third-party contractual services expenses by nearly $70,000. Five zoning FTE are transitioning from the Housing and Community Development Department. This decrease, or, excuse me, this increases Development and Review Services budget by nearly $610,000, but it's a net zero increase to the general fund overall. Moving to the middle of page three, the department has currently paused providing online, on-call building inspection services to municipalities that are not under inter-local agreement. This is so the department can better understand the interdependency between providing these services in-house versus contracting. Moving to budget drivers towards the bottom of page three, BD RS consists of three funds. The general fund, which includes Development Review Services and Code Enforcement, is increasing expenditures by nearly $1.5 million. And this is mainly due to the transition of those five zoning FTE, as well as a short-term rental decision package, which we will review very shortly. Excluding reserves, the Building Services Fund is increasing expenditures by more than $158,000, and this is also due to the short-term rental decision package. Excluding reserves, the Construction License Board Fund is decreasing expenditures by more than $349,000, and this is due to the effects of legislation on the department's revenues and subsequent decreases in expenditures to compensate for this loss. General Fund revenues are increasing nearly $1.1 million, and that's largely due to the anticipated revenues from the short-term rental decision package, as well as historical revenue trends. Revenues for the Building Services Fund are expected to increase more than $283,000, mostly due to the short-term rental decision package. Construction License Board revenues, as we mentioned, is anticipated to decrease more than $348,000 due to legislation. Moving to the top of page four, Personal Services is increasing $1.1 million, and that's mostly due to the net increase of seven FTE. And the department's operating expenses are increasing more than $119,000. Moving to the middle of page four, to the FY '25 decision packages, the department is proposing two decision packages this year. The first decision package is for incentivizing accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. In summary, the department would provide pre-approved building plans for these units at a discount to homeowners, and also waive related permitting costs. This is expected to be a one-time cost of about $50,000 to the general fund. The second decision package is for the Short-Term Rental Program, and this entails an update to the ordinance to include a short-term rental registration program, along with Code Enforcement compliance requirements, supported by Code Enforcement FTE, as well as the technology needed to support that program. Expenditures and revenues would vary year by year, but in FY '25, expenditures would be approximately $1 million, which would be offset by the anticipated revenues of $1.1 And now I'll turn the discussion over to Kevin to accomplishments, starting on the bottom of page four.
Good morning, Commissioners. As I highlight our accomplishments from this past year, I wanted to emphasize two points. The, the, the first is that the, the suite of initiatives that we've implemented this past year are all part of a multi-phased, continuous improvement program that's been ongoing now in BD RS for the last three to four years. And importantly, these initiatives that have been implemented build upon one another, and the synergies and the results that we're, we're seeing have had a compounding benefit in, in the delivery of our customer services and efficiencies. And I, I also want to highlight the fact that launching the major technology initiatives that we have, we have more to come, the significant process and operational improvements that we've made do not happen without staff buy-in. Change is not always easy, and I do want to acknowledge and credit all of the staff in BD RS, from the managers, supervisors, everyone that has supported the blitz of initiatives that we've undertaken and implemented since I've been here. As I speak to some of our accomplishments this, this past year, one of our reoccurring initiatives is to have an annual land development code update. We've had three so far in the past nine months. Last October, we introduced what is called a minor plat process, and we've... we've raised the thresholds of a site plan to bring relief to small land development projects. The minor plat is really a big enhancement. It negates the need for a site plan, which is the most costly and time-consuming effort associated with moving forward subdivisions up to four lots. Right now, we have our first of those minor plats in the pipeline from Habitat for Humanity. So, we're glad to see that already being utilized. And just several months ago, we updated the role of the Development Review Committee to optimize our early assistance, which is a key piece of our project management program. And we've fully deployed our project management program this past year, which now has made significant improvements to early assistance, to our site plan process, to the petition-to-vake process. I like to refer to our project management team as our utility player, because beyond these core processes that they've taken the lead on, they've also been able to jump in and support a host of other initiatives that we've undertaken in BD RS. Belinda referenced that we've merged the zoning team from Housing and Community Development, moved that over to be part of a new division of project management and zoning. This has really optimized the delivery of that early assistance and management of site plans, taking it through that, through that process. An important, an important accomplishment with more to go was within our Building Division, specifically the inspection program this past year. We've effectively eliminated dependence on the third-party contractor, other than when we've had some staffing vacancies, but with a full slate now, we've made refinements that include increasing the number of inspections per day, per inspector. We've hybridized our senior inspector. This position historically has been an in-office-only position, the Inspector III position. Going back now, a number of months ago now, the Inspector IIs will split their time between the office and the field to fill the gap if there is a spike in inspections, negating the need to use a third-party contractor, where we otherwise would have deferred to that going forward. We've also, we've also introduced what we call a two-for-one inspection. Rather than sending out a building inspector, an electrical inspector, to review a new sign, this is done by one inspector now. We've had 650 of these two-for-one inspections so far in FY '24. And you'll hear me speak momentarily about augmenting, to a much greater degree, the effectiveness of our virtual inspection program. It's actually gotten off to a much slower start than we would have hoped to, but I'll speak to that momentarily. Code Enforcement has made real good progress in increasing the number of property foreclosure cases that will be, be advanced. We know the drag that these properties can have on a neighborhood, the property values, the quality of life. We have six in the pipeline right now, and this is something now that's been a focus in code, to screen these properties as aggressively as possible and to move these forward. Contractor Licensing had a milestone technology launch several months ago, shifting from a legacy platform to a seller. This aligns now Contractor Licensing with the rest of BD RS. And Contractor Licensing also moved, physically moved into 440 Court Street across, across from this, this building here. And, you know, that's had a real nice benefit, because contractors, while, while they can work now remotely, electronically, we're often visiting two separate locations, mid-county, as well as here in Clearwater. This brings, really, the concept more of a one-stop shop by having Contractor Licensing in the same building as the remainder of our department. The, the work plan initiatives that I'd like to highlight, right at the top of the list, you'll hear me at times speak to what I think are probably the two most important attributes of our customer service, and that's predictability and certainty. And we've really now reached a new milestone in moving forward what we're going to be calling our Building Permits Level of Service. And just, just within the past month or so, we've gotten initial data, a scorecard, per se, as to how we're performing with our residential permit review, as well as our commercial permit review. And we've set benchmarks that are competitive and comparable to our partner municipalities, City of St. Petersburg, the City of Tampa. We set a benchmark of 14 days for residential permits, 21 days for commercial permits. And the results for the first two quarters are quite favorable. On the residential side, we're averaging 8.2 days for the first review, 4.3 on the second review, considerably lower than the 14 days. Likewise, on the commercial side, we're averaging 16.7, below the 21, and 9.2 on the second. So, this was, this was really important initial data that we've never had access to. And probably even more important, behind this data, we have really granular information that tells us how we're doing by every permit type, how each division is doing, not just building, because building permits go through a review in engineering, they go through a review in environmental. So, we know exactly where there are stress points, where we need to focus on to refine our improvements as we go forward. And I, the piece of this initiative that, to me, is most exciting is that by September, we'll have a public-facing dashboard on our website that will include this information as to how we're doing, what our performance is, how we're doing on residential permits, how we're doing on commercial permits. And it's really a point in time where we should have that transparency and be able to present that, that information to the, to the public. So, that's a real, real big one for us. You know, I spoke a little bit about refinement to our inspection program. That's going to be really augmented later this summer with the deployment of, of another technology platform referred to as Electron Atlas. And it's, it's hard to imagine that doing the volume of inspections per year, 70,000 next-day inspections, that every morning, we have three to four staff that are dedicated to getting a barrage of phone calls from contractors and homeowners, "When is my inspection going to occur?" Well, that's largely going to be eliminated with this technology platform, where every morning, an outbound text message will be sent to all inspections, to a contractor or homeowner, giving them that ETA. This is, this is, this is a service long overdue that's going to bring real benefit to homeowners, to the contractor community, and allow us to recapture that time with staff and repurpose them to other, other really much higher priority duties within the Building Division. There's also other significant benefits of this technology as far as internally routing, routing the inspections that take place each day, redistribution of inspections. So, we're very excited to, to have this launch later this summer. You know, I'd mentioned our virtual inspections has gotten off to, really not the traction that we had hoped for. We are going to be launching the second phase, which is going to significantly increase the types of inspections, windows and doors, roofs, garage doors, opening this up. But we're going to engage the contractor community in the near future to get their input, to make sure that we leverage this technology as we should be. And what we're heavily leaning towards is actually making these high-volume, simple inspections mandatory. We'll just take it out, we'll just take it out of the equation as to whether they, they need to use it or not. We'll make it mandatory. There's other municipalities that are doing the same, and so this is where we're likely going to be go, be going with that, that technology. The other, the other work plan initiative that I just want to highlight is that of utilizing artificial intelligence. We're going to take a conservative approach. We beta-tested this technology last year on some site plans, but the market is so fluid right now. There's been some shifts in some of the vendors that we have spoken to. So, like I said, we're going to be conservative, but we are going to pilot it on three fronts. The technology now is available to automate review on what's called vertical construction, that would be building design. We know it exists for horizontal site plan work. We're going to use it there. We're also going to see if we can pilot it in areas that we at times see stress, and that's on permit intake. You know, we can't regulate the number of permits we see every day, so we think there's an opportunity to utilize this technology in giving us that support in that area of our operations. I'm going to shift, lastly, to performance measures. What's in your budget presentation are largely volume or count numbers, but they do provide, I think, an important economic trending indicator. You know, listening to Mike Twitty's presentation the other day, I, I confident that the numbers that we're seeing reinforce what Mike was saying, which is that we're seeing steady. We're not seeing, we're not seeing a drop, we're not seeing an increase, but we're seeing a steady trend, which is better, of course, than if it was dropping. We're also seeing that on the revenue side as well. We want to look at both sides of the equation, and our revenues through two quarters of FY '24 are, are steady, pretty much flat, up a percent or so in building. There are a little bit of, of an increase of a spike in, in DRS zoning, but on the whole, they're, they're pretty much steady. The, I spoke to the, the Building Level of Service Dashboard. I want to highlight two others to finish up my presentation. I think you'll recall that a year or so ago, we introduced an entirely new telephone operational system within BD RS, where we just had this obsolete antiquated, you know, 20 different telephone lines. And, and the goal of this system, when we launched it, was to have the, the highest percentage of phone calls answered live by a subject matter expert within the four primary areas of service that we provide. And I'm, and I'm pleased to share that we have maintained, with approximately eight to 9,000 phone calls a month, that we have maintained a 90% plus live answer rate for all of our incoming calls within the department. That's a real enhancement from, from where we were a little bit over a year ago. And most importantly, these calls are funneled, like I said, not just to somebody who can't answer. They're funneled to somebody in zoning, they're funneled to somebody in permitting, they're funneled to somebody in inspections. So, this was a major enhancement within our everyday opera, operations. The other one that I wanted to just speak to, as far as progress being made, is the site plan cycles. I talked to bringing certainty and predictability. We, we updated our processes to bring that predictability on the timeline. However, the number of review cycles ultimately is what is going to dictate the cost and time associated with the developer routing a site plan through our department. And when we compare, since we went all-electronic, ePermitHub collaborative review, we have decreased the number of site plan review cycles significantly. We're down now averaging about 2.75 review cycles to get from start to finish with the site plan. We were well over four when we were processing paper site plans prior to the launch of ePermitHub. Our, our goal, of course, is to drive that number lower, but we are trending in, in the right direction. I, coincidentally, today is my two-year anniversary here with Pinellas County. I have to say, I feel very positive about the progress we've made in BD RS, and I look forward to advancing everything that I've laid out going forward.
Any questions? Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot to unpack in your presentation. I won't get into all those details, but first of all, I wanted to commend you and your staff for the, you call it staff buy-in, some people call it cultural changes, but it's from the leadership of the organization that makes the difference. And it's not just in the talk, it's in the walk, because there's many, many times that I've asked your assistance on something, and it's you who makes the contact. It's you who makes those changes and tries to educate and illustrate what's going on. So, I appreciate it. And I appreciate, and I think that transcends, gets down through your organization. Cultural, cultural changes start at the top, and I appreciate your work. So, thank you for that. How is the, we were, it seemed to me that we were running two parallel permitting processes, one internal, one external, and there was a six-month trial period going on. Are we still in that, or is it over, or?
Oh.
Plan reviews, you know, the, we had, we had said we were going to have an outside group do parallel work with our, our own staff.
Yeah, the third party. So, we've, we've piloted the utilization of, of building permit support. At the moment, our data is showing that we don't need that support. So, what we're doing right now is just maintaining a certain percentage, a low percentage of our, of our workload, to make sure that if we do get a spike, that they're primed to come in and support us as we need to. We don't want to unnecessarily, you know, expend those dollars if we don't need to.
Okay. And I know we've had a couple of contractors come to us during the year and speak to us at commission meetings. I just, I certainly hope we continue to treat our contractors, you know, like, like we do everybody, that we're trying to get Code Enforcement to work. And we're not trying to penalize, we're trying to get it done, make the changes happen. To me, that's the most important thing. So, if there are some things that are going on, as long as we're giving our contractors reasonable time to make changes, I think that's fair, and I hope that we continue with that approach. So, talk to me a little bit about your thoughts on this rapid response Code Enforcement that we talked about with regards to our, you know, our housing, our Airbnb-type Code Enforcement issues. How's that, how does that, how does that look to you? I mean, I know you mentioned that we're doing it for next year, but what does that look like to you?
So, we've laid out a, a program that is really multi-pronged. First, it would, it would be augmenting our Code Enforcement team, so that we're able to provide additional hours in evenings, weekend resources. And so, we're going to be restructuring, today we have two banks or two, two groups of Code Enforcement officers. With, with the intent of this program, we're going to increase that to three and allow shift rotations to provide that support as necessary now, because we know the greatest percentage of complaints and issues associated with short-term rentals are going to be Friday evenings, weekends, as opposed to our typical work hours. So, we're going to be augmenting our staffing to provide that. We're also going to have a dedicated short-term rental administrator within code that will be the overall quarterback, because while technology is the second key piece of this program moving forward, and that has to do with a registration program and a more proactive automated monitoring on occupancy, there still has to be a full-time administrator that's, that's able to support that. In fact, the first year, our decision package includes having two temporary personnel, because if we're looking at bringing on 70% compliance the first year, it's about 2,000 short-term rentals. Technology can do a lot of things in an automated fashion, but we know that there's going to be just that, just that surge of activity that we want to be prepared to be able to handle in moving this forward. The other piece of this that we believe is a very important one is the life safety issue, as well as a preventative as well as a preventative, preventative measure in having short-term rental operators get their registration, say, "Well, I'm free and clear now, so now I'll go do my illegal improvements in my structure, and no one's going to be aware that I just converted my garage into two additional bedrooms." So, what we, what we're envisioning is that the initial registration will include a building inspection compliant with the Florida Building Code. It will confirm all the conditions. If that passes, it will be part of the registration program. And then every two years thereafter, there will be a follow-up building inspection. And we really think this is an important tool, as I said, to really minimize, you know, those parties that think that they can get away then with converting and modifying their home because they got through the initial registration. The registration is envisioned as an annual renewal, and with the building inspection occurring biannually. And importantly, as laid out by Belinda, the projected revenues from the first year will exceed all of the both staffing and technology costs. So, there is no impact to the general fund with this particular decision package. And if you look at, if you look forward, we're, you know, we're projecting 80% compliance the second year with a reduction of first-year costs that will not be reoccurring. And the third year going forward, based on all of the data we have, most municipalities that are working this type of program with this type of technology will have a 90% plus compliance, and we know those revenues will far surpass the cost in maintaining this program.
And most importantly, we're helping our communities survive.
We're looking to preserve the quality of life in our residential districts.
There you go. Just one last thing, and I just wanted to commend you on the SLA, that platform change is huge, and I can't tell you how much that's going to help. Exploring AI carefully, I think, is good as well. That telephone operational thing is like, I mean, we're introducing, and I'm not trying to draw comparisons with a CAM portal that we're doing, but being able to talk to somebody for these contractors is huge, and not to have to leave all of these callback messages. When am I going to get called back? Did they get my message? Do I need to call again and again and again? So, being able to talk to somebody who knows what they're talking about, it's game-changing in the simplest way, but the most important way. So, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate all your work.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know it wasn't included, but you had a decision on the $50,000 for the ADUs permits and blueprints. I understand the cost, I'm assuming the cost for the blueprint licensing and all of that, but the waiving of the permit, what kind of financial impact is that for us? Do you have a projection?
So, I want to just maybe just elaborate a little bit on what the intent of this decision package is.
This is ongoing, Commissioners, by the way. So, you'll see, you'll see a recommendation from me on that, but let him explain.
So, in ADU, a typical homeowner that is interested in wanting to have an ADU, it's a new world firstly, trying to think, "Oh, I have to retain an architect." The cost of that architect to do an ADU, depending on the size of the ADU, could probably be anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000. That's a big expense. Now, the concept of, "Oh, I have to figure out how to permit an ADU," where, again, this is a whole new world for a homeowner that's interested in this. By introducing pre-approved templates, it eliminates the cost of what would be associated with the building permit, it eliminates the, other than a nominal cost of typically other municipalities are charging $500 to $800 for a set of pre-approved plans that otherwise would run, like I said, anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000. It also is going to shorten the review time, because those plans will not have to be reviewed by building, they'll just go through utilities and DRS review. So, it brings a lot of, a lot of benefits. We hustled this the last couple of weeks to see if we could speak with a number of other municipalities in the country that have utilized this, and Eugene, Oregon, was, gave us the most detailed feedback that the program has been highly successful. It has increased their number of ADUs by approximately 40 per year, which is not insignificant, because we have a handful a year right now. So, we're hearing from other municipalities that it has worked and it has been a successful program.
I just think it's a great idea and concept as far as trying to incentivize folks, take one more of those obstacles away. You know, we're seeing that where, you know, in-laws or grandmothers or, you know, the, back to that families, generations of family living under one roof because they have to now, but to have that option to provide a little bit nicer setup, if we can remove an obstacle, I think it's the right thing to do. So, I'm glad that it's still ongoing.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, Kevin. First of all, I want to start by just saying that I appreciate your availability and getting back to me quickly whenever I have questions from residents or contractors or whatever, and I appreciate that very much. And I think you've really done a great job with a lot of improvements and efficiencies in the BDRS department, and I know you're going to continue to do that. On the decision packages, I agree with everything Commissioner Justice just said on the ADUs. I think that's a great, great idea, and I really appreciate the effort and the work that you all put into the short-term rental, the details here. And to me, I think that's just an absolute no-brainer, really, on both of these. I've got another short-term rental complaint in my email this morning, so. In addition, the ones that I have in my own neighborhood. Curious on two things on the STRs. How did you calculate the $450 registration fee? Was that just, you've kind of set a budget and backed into that, or is that consistent with what other communities are doing?
It's both.
Okay. And then, what, on the initial inspection, what happens if they don't, if the STR doesn't pass that initial, if you go in and find that they've converted a garage into another two or three bedrooms? What happens? Does that STR become non-compliant and off, they can't rent it anymore? Or what would?
Well, they would, they would not hold a registration and be able to operate, because to not pass would likely result in a notice of violation because there was work performed without a permit, or the home does not align with what the certificate of occupancy historically shows. So, it's going to move to a degree of building enforcement before it would have the ability then to operate as a short-term rental.
Got it. Okay. I think, I just, my gut tells me we're going to find a lot of that. So, thank you.
Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if you looked at Austin, Texas, but Austin has a huge accessory dwelling unit program. I was out there and had a chance to take a tour. I've talked about that year before, and they have a fee structure for that, so that may be one that, if you haven't taken a look at, you know, maybe to take a look at it and see how that looks. If you did comment on this, I apologize if I missed it, but how are we doing with our plans review process where individuals can now send the information in electronically, it can be reviewed, and their response can be sent back to them quickly? How are we doing with that? Is it really helping to get things through the process, or are you finding that person still may not understand how to use it?
So, we'll always have, you know, an occasional customer that is unfamiliar with how to upload, because we're all electronic, but we provide those resources right in our lobby to be able to assist anyone that needs support in uploading plans. I mean, when I was speaking to the level of, the level of service, this is clearly demonstrating the benefits that we're seeing as a result of all electronic processing and review, because the review happens real-time collaboratively, where every reviewer sees what the other is doing at the same time. So, it's shortening the review period, it's allowing for more meaningful comments when there are revisions, the comments are embedded right on the drawings themselves, those are sent back to whether it's an engineer or an architect, and it's absolutely facilitating, you know, what the objective was.
Okay, that's fabulous. I just know that, you know, we implemented that with the hopes that it would, I think it was Commissioner Eggers that talked about some of the concerns he was getting from persons about the time, you know, to get responses back. So, I was just wondering how that was going. And I would say that I agree with what Commissioner Justice stated. I'm not saying things have to be free, but I am saying that if you're looking at paying anywhere up to the $13,000 for a plan, that now takes that proposed project off of affordability, because, you know, if you're doing the ADU, you're doing it because in some cases, bad reasons, but in other cases, you know, it's a dwelling unit that someone can afford. So, when you have those additional costs that high, it does kind of take it out of the affordable realm. And I really love expedited permitting processes for affordable, whether it's an affordable single-family home, or if it is a multifamily unit. That's why Habitat for Humanity kind of sticks to the floor plan that they use, because it's been used everywhere, you know, it's gone through the review processes, and they can kind of get those through quickly, so that they're constructing the project quickly, and time is money. So, I really like the idea of looking at what's going to be standard, three or four, maybe five specifics, and then, you know, you know pretty much how those are going to be constructed. That saves time all around, so. But thank you, I appreciate the progress that we're making, because it makes a difference when we're trying to get some projects through, so thank you. Okay, Dean, my time.
Okay, any other questions or comments? No, I think we've kind of exhausted them all. Thank you so much, Kevin, that was a great presentation, and thanks for all your great work. Now, we're going to be going to the agenda item that is on 6/12 for Department of Administrative Services. So, you know which date to open up on your granicus? It would be 6/12.
And while everyone's getting their seat and switching to next Wednesday's agenda to find the document, I'll get it up on the screen in just a moment as well. We have Shane Kuntse here, returning to present on administrative services, and Joe Laurel, Director of the Department, also over at that table. So, Shane.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Thank you for having me today. We are going to be talking about the administrative services budget for FY25. To start off with, we are going to turn to page two, which has our efficiencies and cost-saving measures for the department. In FY25, they highlighted $469,000 in known efficiencies. In FY24, 1.9 million, and in FY23, 466,000. And the details are, again, on page two. Moving right along to the top of page three, we're going to jump into our topics for discussion. The first thing I want to highlight is the department is currently undergoing a reorg this year, and that will be effective for FY24, and we will also see those changes in the FY25 budget. This was done to split off facilities and real property into two separate divisions, and then purchasing and risk management into two separate divisions. This is going to help with workload management and oversight and specialization. Next up, our fleet management group has moved away from direct billing for vehicles, and we have transitioned them to a charge-out rate, which we're already starting to see efficiencies from this move, including increased billing accuracy and providing consistent pricing to departments throughout the year. Previously, it was much more manual process, and customers would receive bills that would ebb and flow throughout the year. This year, this year, they're seeing consistent billing, and they don't have to worry about major increases or decreases until the next fiscal year. Purchasing has also experienced some improved efficiencies with their recent implementation of the OpenGov software, and they continue to work with the Office of Management and Budget to try and further those efficiencies. And then finally, property and casualty insurance has renewed for this year at $15.3 million, which actually came about $700,000 under the FY24 budget. That's the first time we've seen that in some time. Due to that change, or change from the budget, we are keeping it flat at 16 million, and it's going to give us a little bit of wiggle room next year for that increase. Following right along to the top of page three, we will begin with our budget drivers. Now, this department is supported by three different funds, including the general fund, the fleet management fund, and the risk management fund. Excluding reserves, the total FY25 budget for this department is actually decreasing by 1.1 million to 97.8 million, and this is primarily due to a reduction of $2.3 million in vehicles and equipment that were anticipated to be replaced in FY25. The FY25 budget for revenue is increasing by 3.6 million to 48.7, and this is due to anticipated fleet management and risk cost plan charges to departments. Reserves are increasing by 7.4 million to 42.2 million, and this is due to higher-than-anticipated revenue for the risk financing fund in FY24, and also due to an adjustment in the capital A expenditures for vehicles and heavy equipment I previously mentioned in the fleet management fund. The department is decreasing by 2.5 full-time employees to 170. This is due to the reduction of two ARPA-funded employees in procurement, and the remaining is a management intern that is being removed in FY25. Overall, their personal services are decreasing by 411,000 to 22.3 million, despite the 3% proposed adjustment and the Florida retirement system increases. This is due to personnel lapses being budgeted for. It's also due to the 2.5 FTE, and it's also from personnel attrition. This department has experienced quite a bit of turnover, so as newer employees are coming in and senior are retiring, there is a gap there. Operating expenses are increasing overall by 1.5 million to 63.4. This is due to a variety of increases across the budget, including increases to our rentals and leases, of which there is a decision package we will discuss momentarily. Also, repair and maintenance for both facilities and real property and fleet are expected to increase, both due to increased aging fleets and aging infrastructure, and then also volatility in market prices that we've seen over the last couple of years. Utilities, which includes both Duke Electric and natural gas, and then the other utilities you'd expect, like waste management, water, are also increasing for the department. And then finally, fleet parts have also experienced numerous increases over the year, and that is going to be the same for FY25. Capital outlay for the department is decreasing by 2.2 million to 12.1 million. This is primarily driven by a $2.3 million reduction in the total number of vehicles being budgeted for the vehicle replacement plan in FY25. I do want to take a moment, because this does impact how we look at their reserves and how their reserves are increasing. We have noticed a trend in recent years where we are having issues both with supply chain, getting vehicles in the door, and we've also seen vehicles lasting longer than they previously due to less mileage being used, more work from home, there's less wear and tear on those vehicles, less mileage being added up. So, those vehicles are being deferred. So, we are trying to align the capital outlay budget with actuals, and that is going to move a significant chunk back into their reserves until those vehicles are ready to be purchased. Next, moving along to page, about middle of page four is going to be our decision packages. The department is requesting $250,000 for the operation and maintenance of the St. Petersburg Veterinary Technology Center. This became a focus of conversation yesterday with animal services, and this is the second part of that. This is where we're going to be operating and maintaining the building, and that will be done by Joe's team in DAS. $250,000 is requested for expenditures, and then you'll also notice on attachment five, there is about $92,000 in revenue anticipated from this operation. The funding is included in the budget, and it is Gotten County Administration's preliminary recommendation. Next on the list of decision packages, the department is also requesting an additional $150,000 for janitorial services and public-facing facilities. The department stated that low service levels have been inadequate. The department stated that low service levels have been inadequate in these specific areas, and finding appropriate help that meets all the qualifications to operate in specifically more secure buildings has been difficult. The funding is currently not in the county administrator's preliminary recommendation for that decision package. At this time, this concludes the presentation for the operating budget. I'm going to transition now to Chris Rose for the Capitol.
Good morning again, Commissioners. You can see the two projects there. Their South County Service Center has been in the works for quite some time. It is still there in the budget, and the funding is available when the project is ready. The two ARPA projects, both having to do with electric vehicles and the fueling system, are very well underway. Remember, there is a change in federal law where we can no longer underground our fuel tanks, and so ARPA is funding part of that project and helping us get it done. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Joe, and he's going to talk about accomplishments, work plan, and performance measures.
Thanks, Chris. Morning. Fiscal year 24 accomplishments, the first bullet. We've been shutting down fuel sites. We had 17 fuel sites. When you look at the cost to operate, maintain, and ensure fuel sites, plus the potential environmental concerns, it just made sense to do that. One of the fuel sites we were going to shut down and are going to shut down is 46th Street. It's between the CJC campus and the airport. That fuel site is on an old fleet management garage site, and it happens to be a fuel depot there as well. That site has reached the end of its useful life, so we have to shut it down. We have a perfect opportunity, though. That's airport property. So by turning that back to the airport, they could do something constructive with those six acres, and they want to use that for rental cars, is what Tom Juesberry told me the last time we talked about it, which is about two or three weeks ago. So we're going to move the fuel site to the CJC campus. We have an old warehouse back along the road, the secure road, well, kind of secure road that goes back behind the campus now, that there's going to be another project there to make that road secure. But we're going to put our new fuel site back on that campus. That's really going to help out the sheriff staff because they use that fuel site to fuel their vans that they transport convicts with. So it's going to make it easier for them to fuel, and it's going to be a county fuel site on top of that. So it's a win-win situation for all involved. That's been funded in full, and it's just a matter now, we're just going through the process of procuring the actual work that needs to be done. So it has worked out very well for us. The underutilized vehicle initiative was implemented. So far, we've had 43 vehicles turned in. And by underutilized, we're talking about severely underutilized vehicles. We're talking about vehicles that, you know, are keen kept as backups and things like that, that really are not needed in the long term. So we're giving departments some time to work through that, look at their operating plans, the way they operate day in and day out. And the more vehicles they turn in, the better it's going to be for everyone. It really reduces the operating costs for the departments and the county in general.
There's a lot of opportunity here because not every department needs a vehicle to sit there, and periodically, somebody need to go out. We can pay people mileage, we can, there's alternative ways of doing that than depreciating a vehicle, you know, as backup. So we really need to empower Don at a fleet to be able to push departments, and he's starting to do that. And so you're seeing the results of part of it. But again, this is another area where I think we have a lot of opportunity.
Thanks, Barry. We also, the Purchasing Division partnered with Clerk and OMB to create a financial management training series, which was really a big success. Chris and his staff did a great job putting that together, along with the clerk's staff. And it's been really, really beneficial to county departments. I mean, when you look at what they talked about in those classes, encumbrances, procurement, contracting process in general, change orders, these are all mystifying things to most departments. So any way we can break through that is always a big help going forward. So that's been very, very helpful. We also restored cyber and property coverages back to a responsible level by eliminating co-insurance on top of the deductible. We had a co-insurance program in place where, in other words, we were self-insured up to a certain amount of dollars on top of what we were self-insured for. So because we had a rebate come back from Gallagher, I believe, Rick, correct me if I'm wrong.
FM Global.
Global, I'm sorry, FM Global. We were able to raise our coverages, and it's not costing the county any additional money. So that's very positive. Commissioner Long, this next one, the Hangar. It is going forward. Okay, I know that's something we've talked about in the past. I got one four-letter acronym for that, FDEP, really dragged this process out. We got past all of that. We had to do remediation at the site. It took a long time to plan that, to get the FDEP to approve of that, and put wells in for monitoring and all. So very positive, we are moving forward. We expect to break ground next month on it. Finally, it's going to take about a year to build it.
Well, since you brought that up, Commissioner Long has a question.
Yes, because this, I have heard this story almost every year since I've been here, and 12 years is a long time.
I understand.
So when you say it's moving forward and you expect to break ground next month, could you please let me know when that is? I would really like to be there because I'm not going to believe it till I see it.
I understand, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I understand.
It's not safe the way it is now.
It has been a very, very frustrating project, needless to say, but we have made positive progress, so I just wanted to bring that up.
We have another question on follow-up of that. So Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we break ground next month. What is the anticipated completion?
12 to 14 months.
12 to 14 months.
Looking at construction, yeah.
What did you say the completion date?
12 to 14 months.
You better keep your eye on that.
We're keeping our eye on it too, Commissioner.
What?
Trust me.
You don't have to worry, the sheriff's keeping his eye on it too, okay?
And the sheriff, absolutely. And we completed the purchase of the ICAW property for our future headquarters.
Of which last night, the Largo Planning Council moved a recommendation forward, you know, for rezoning. No, I was there, it was positive, good discussion, so, you know, all good. We go, and just so you know, we go to City Council on July the 16th for the first screening.
With that being said, part of a work plan for this year, actually next year, is to start the process to hire a design firm to program the new facility. That's obviously going to take a little while. You get to look at, you know, all the firms that are available that are qualified and go through a competitive process. So that'll be performed in conjunction with our consultant, CBRE, and our construction consultant as well. And to conduct procurement process for the fuel site at the County Justice Center, like I just said, that's going to happen, that'll be finished by this time next year. Update management plan for county-owned property. We have to make sure that tenants that are on county-owned property are taking care of those properties. We have a lot of square footage responsible for almost 5 million square feet. So you could imagine what we deal with on a month-in and month-out basis. So we need to make sure that people, the tenants in our buildings that we own are taking care of those facilities as per contract. Update real estate policy and procedures. Again, that hasn't been done since the former Real Estate Management Department was put in place. It's got to happen. Update purchasing code. P-card small dollar threshold is what we're really looking at here. You know, it's $5,000. P-card is a method of payment. When you look at it across the spectrum, in fact, there's going to be an item on, for the board meeting, an actual audit that the IG did. A lot of the items that are in that audit are things that, you know, basically, should, we should be able to spend money for subscriptions and things like that. The problem is, is our policy does not reflect that. So the P-card is just a method of payment, and it makes it a lot easier for departments to operate. So we're going to look into changing that policy going forward, so it doesn't come out in an audit, in a future audit. And of course, the US 19 at Drew Street, we're also going to complete the fuel site there. That's, that fuel site is out of compliance, so we need to make sure that we replace that fuel site, and already have bid it, and it's just a matter of constructing it at this point in time. One of the other things I wanted to bring up too, Commissioner, we, Commissioners, we basically have reinvented the facilities management division of DAS. Kristin and her staff have done a great job, day in and day out, changing the way we operate, new management team in place. You know, we're using technology now, City Works, to program things for replacement instead of just guessing when things need to be replaced. So that's really going to bear fruit in the future. You know, there's no question that we operated blind for years. You know, we can't guess when things need to be replaced. There's got to be a better methodology, and we really are working towards that end. So it's, you know, that in itself has been huge. You know, it's been a huge, huge development in our department and for the county in general.
Want to move forward? Any questions, discussion? Commissioner Agnew.
Well, and just again, I think on the, what you had mentioned in the previous one about the reserve levels, if we could just maybe not, I don't want you to address it today, but maybe next month when we get back together, Barry, kind of look at all these different departments and reserve increases, and what they're, what, some of them are like delayed capital implementation, some are, just give us a sense, because there's significant increases, and it seems a little different. I don't remember seeing this as much.
Well, so on the fleet side, that's a little bit different than a reserve, okay? That's like, that's like a depreciation account, okay? We're paying for future cars by depreciating them out and then reserving that amount each year to where when that car's due, the money's in the fund to replace that vehicle.
So this year, there's a larger-than-normal.
Correct. It's building up.
That's what I want to hear, though. That's what I want to hear in that summary of the reserve increases, so that we have a overall sense of why we're getting these big bumps. So that, yeah, that makes sense.
But we use that like a depreciation account, like you would for, you know, and so it's a little bit different. But we can outline those, same way. We also have risk reserves and things like that, so we can outline those and why we have those.
Yes, because my question's on the risk reserves. He explained the car one, so I wasn't going on that one. He did a great, he did a great job. Must have anticipated my question. But that risk reserve's at 52%, and in, I think you got 28.8 million in that risk reserve, so I got real questions on that one.
So we'll have that, we can have that, and we'll show you the actuarial. Okay, I mean, so we use an actuarial, you know, so it predicts, you know, that, okay, how much, you know, what's your, what's your threshold of being able to cover your predicted risk? And that's, that's the way we go about that. It's a pretty standard methodology.
Right. And again, does that go along the lines of standard practice, best practice, and that kind of thing?
Absolutely. And that's based upon your predicted claims. That's based upon, you know, what, what you.
Right. And we've never really analyzed the funds that much, so I think this is going to be a good exercise.
We can, we can absolutely do that.
Any other question? Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you. Just how are we doing with the electric vehicles that we brought online? I know they were brought back here and I kind of got them. They wouldn't let me drive it, but I did get in it. And for any of the replacement vehicles, will any of those be replaced with electric?
Actually, Commissioner, the electric vehicles are working out very well for us. Very utilitarian, they do the job just as well as a gas car does. We're running a pilot project now with six Ford Lightning pickup trucks. We're not buying any additional electric vehicles right now until the pilot program's over. We want to see what it's going to cost to maintain these vehicles over a little longer period of time, how they operate in our environment from a duty cycle perspective. So when it comes right down to it, yeah, we're still, we still have that technology in mind. That's the way the auto industry is going. But we're taking a little step back and testing to see how it works, if it's better, because the bulk of our fleet are pickup trucks.
All right.
You know, so, yeah. So we'll wait and see how that goes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate it. And next one up is the capital, government capital improvement plan. If you're ready, Chris, and want to make introductions?
Yes, Madam Chair, we are. We have Andrew Brown. I know I've called him Drew a few times, he answers the both. So you all will remember Jackie Traynor. Jackie retired after many, many years of county service, and Drew has taken over. And Jackie trained him up and got him ready, and in all candor, we have not missed a beat. So kudos to Drew and his team. And I'm going to let you introduce the folks that are at the table here, so.
Sounds good. Thank you, Chris. As he said, my name's Andrew Brown. I'm the Capital Budget Manager with the Office of Management and Budget. To my right, I have Kristen Pittman, who is a governmental budget analyst. And to my left, I have Gabriela Gonzalez, who is also a governmental budget analyst. So they're, they're the staff members responsible for putting all this information together, and, and yeah, they've done a great job. Before we get started, I also want to thank the department, specifically Public Works CID Group. They're here today to answer any questions you might have. They're great partners to work with. We really do have great partners in the department, so just want to give them a shout-out before we get started. So today, we're going to be talking about the governmental capital improvement program. The enterprise capital improvement program was presented to you during their budget information sessions. So specifically, we're going to be excluding utilities, airport, and solid waste, focusing on the public works departments, parks, things of that nature. These are projects that are predominantly penny-funded. There are other funding sources included in the governmental capital improvement program, but it's predominantly penny-funded. It is a six-year plan, the first year of which must be balanced, so this year, that'll be FY25. And the outer years are just that, they're a financial product, a financial plan, and they're subject to change as the needs of the community change and as our resources change. So again, today, we'll be focusing on penny projects. So what is the penny for Pinellas? It's a, it's a 1% local government infrastructure sales surtax. It's been in effect since 1990, most recently approved in 2017 with 83% of the vote, and it was renewed for a period January 1st, 2020, through December 31st, 2029. Part, you'll commonly hear this fourth decade referred to as Penny Four. And part of Penny Four, in accordance with statutory requirements and interlocal agreements with municipalities, beginning January 1st, 11.3% of the revenue is taken off the top and set aside for these categories right here. So first, you have economic development and capital projects and housing at 8.3%. And I will point out that that 8.3% is split evenly between those two categories. And then finally, we have jail and court facilities at 3%. Once that off-the-top, set-aside revenue is taken off the top, then the county and cities get their distributions, and you can see their distributions on the screen right We have updated our penny revenue estimates for the decade. You can see, I'll use the laser pointer. You can see in this first column, July 2017, back when we were doing the 2017 education campaign, that's what we thought revenue would be for the decade. So that was what we forecasted. Then COVID happened, and you can see we updated our estimates June 2021. You can see the percentage is right here. That is as compared to 2017. So each of these percentage columns are as compared to 2017. So in June 2021, when we updated, we actually thought we were going to have less revenue for the decade. Things got a little bit better by June 2023, and we're happy to report June 2024, we've updated our estimates again, and we project that we'll collect 19% more than we originally thought as compared to our 2017 education campaign. In fact, I'll just point out that the most recent distributions collected through March, so six months, 50% of the fiscal year, we are 0.8% lower year-to-date at this same time, and FY23 was a record year. So we're actually on pace with last year, which was a record year. That's 100,000. So we're right there, we could even beat it. So the capital projects fund forecast has been updated, revenue projections have been updated in line with the Office of Economic and Demographic Research, their estimating conference. The expenditures for existing projects have been updated. Their additional funding that they've requested has been updated. Their additional funding that they've requested has been updated and baked into the equation. So that's included in the CIP plan as it stands today. And finally, the capital projects fund is balanced through FY '30. Now, that doesn't tell the whole story necessarily. Within the capital projects fund are several programs, and those revenues have specific expenditures they must be spent on. And you can see on the screen, and I apologize, it should say through FY '30, it doesn't, but for the whole decade, when we look at the individual programs, the revenue and corresponding expenditures, these programs are all balanced except for county penny. And we'll get to that in a second. But you can see the set-asides are balanced. Coastal management, tourist development tax funded is balanced, and that's based on the May 2nd presentation that was given to you. So no changes from that. And then finally, the ninth cent ATMS projects are balanced. Again, I, I just want to mention that the additional funding request is baked into the equation. It is included in the CIP. Included in your backup is a document called Additional Funding Requests. And what that does is it goes project by project. Anything that increased 250,000 and 15%, any project that met that threshold gets called out specifically in that document. And in it, it'll either, in one column, it'll summarize what happened, and in another column, it gets very granular and it'll explain exactly what happened to the project, et cetera. We, we attempt to categorize those increases and present them to you here, and I can go through each category and just give you a, a broad idea of what those categories are. So first, you have bid results. It's pretty self-explanatory. Those are the increases based on bids received. They're not anticipated to change much after the bid's been received, so it's a pretty small category. Current day pricing, that is your inflationary category. That captures both historical inflation that's already occurred, so the department's updated their estimates based on current day pricing for unit prices. And it's also capturing future anticipated inflation. So that is your inflationary category. You have reduction in cost sharing. Those are the coastal projects. Previously, we cost share those projects with the federal government. Approximately 60% of their funding was funded by the federal government. We've now baked that into our CIP because we're taking on 100% of those costs. So that's probably a one timeline item that you'll see there for additional funding. And again, no changes from that May 2nd presentation with the TDT and BCC. Next, we have previously unbudgeted construction at 109 million. That's actually outer year construction. So you have a six-year plan, but these projects go past that six-year plan, and our system allows us to capture those cost estimates beyond six years. So we bake that into our system and we keep track of it. And every year, when we come present to you, just for transparency purposes, we include that line item. So that's really made up of two items. East Lake Road Corridor, we baked in additional funding in the outer years. I think it was FY '33, so way beyond our six-year plan. And then we also programmed in construction for Anclot Road, again, beyond FY '30. And so that's just for transparency purposes. We don't want to bake that into the outer years, have the six-year plan creep up and somehow it gets in the plan through a backdoor. We want to be transparent and bring that to you. So those are outer year construction estimates added. Lastly, we have two categories that used to be one. We used to capture these two categories under scope change. We're trying to break those out and be a little more transparent with it. We really want scope change to capture things that were willfully changed. So for example, say you were resurfacing a road from Alt 19 to US 19, and now we want to go to McMullen Booth Road because it just makes sense. You can save on mobilization. It's either department-driven or community-driven. That's a scope change, right? The, the limits of the project are changing. Versus requirements, sometimes it's out of our control, and we're told by a granting or permitting agency that you must do XYZ if you're going to do ABC. So that's what that category is trying to, to capture. We don't want to roll those up anymore. We want to break them out for transparency. So again, you have a document that goes into very granular detail on all those increases. There were two new project requests submitted, and I will mention that these are not included in the forecast yet. You have Shore Drive Bridge Replacement at $6.4 million. This is 100, 100% designed already. It is ready for bid, and I will point out that it is ARPA-eligible. So if there was a scenario where ARPA funding became available, you could swap this in and make this ARPA instead of penny. Just mentioning that. It is 100% design. And then you have Orange Street Bridge in the same vicinity as Shore Drive up in Azona. Design has not started, so they're asking for the full allocation. Again, these are not baked into the forecast. I will mention that county penny, so if you recall, the capital projects fund is balanced through FY '30, right? But within it, you have several programs. County penny specifically is not. It has an ending fund balance in FY '30 of negative 16.5 million. You can adopt the plan as is. You have to balance FY '25. You can have that program have a negative ending balance, and you'll have four budget cycles to address it. So I'll just mention that, that it does have a negative $16 million ending fund balance. If you were to add Shore Drive to the equation, that would increase that negative ending fund balance. Same with Orange Street.
What have you estimated for the increases in the budget? It looks like our penny's obviously gone up significantly. What have you estimated going out?
So for the decade?
Yeah. So to, to, to attack some of this stuff. This is just for the year, right? Right. For the year, we're good. That's through the end of the 30 or 29?
Through 30, yeah.
Okay, so what, yeah, so what are you?
So for example, originally, we thought 914 million in county penny. It's ebbed and flowed. We currently sit at 1.08 billion, which has helped with the inflationary impact.
So you're, do you have estimates to go against this new increase in funding? Oh, okay. There we go.
Oh, I, I think you're asking, how did, how did we capture or take care of this?
I'm just trying to understand. You've got increases in expenses. It's not balanced anymore. That means you've estimated some kind of revenue and the penny for those last four years.
Yeah.
And I was wondering what that increase was.
Yes, I'll point, I'll point out 369 million additional funding, right, for the decade. 85 million TDT funded. You're doing additional transfer in FY '26, so kind of ignore that one. That's not penny impact. Previously unbudgeted construction is outer year. It's not even in this penny decade, but we want to bring it to you for transparency. Scope change requirements, bid results and current day pricing will impact your penny. And to your point, yes, the penny revenues have increased. We've also taken a close look at our estimates, and we've also refined the plan. So the department's done a lot of work to reschedule things, re-prioritize things. And so things have shifted to compensate for that. And we will touch on some of those in a couple of slides.
Thank you.
But that is how we have a balanced capital projects fund. The only thing I wanted to make note of for Deneen Causeway is, is a, a change to the way we're reflecting it in the plan. Previously, that 70 million funding, that 70 million right there was future grant. We thought it more appropriate to reflect it as funding to be determined. Not to say it won't be future grant. It's just, it's probably going to be a mixture of future grant, partnerships with municipalities, the state. It's just more appropriate to reflect it as to be determined instead of future grant.
To get to the overall balance, you have money budgeted and penny, but we just don't know where the project's going to go because it requires so much federal money. It's got to compete. So until that projects, we have a lot of flexibility depending upon the outcome of that.
That 16.5 negative number there includes that 10.7 million for design and includes the 42 million?
It includes 42 million in budgeted amounts that may or may not be spent.
Right.
But to your point, it excludes the 70 million and to be determined.
Correct.
Okay.
Next, this graphic really is just attempting to show you FY '25, right? So they have 330 million in the capital projects fund. That's all projects in the capital projects fund, not necessarily just penny planned. And so this is showing the funding sources that are going to support those planned expenditures. It's not revenue we anticipate we collect in FY '25. And you're probably wondering, well, how are you going to spend 258 million in penny if you're not going to collect it? That's built-up penny that's built up over time. So again, these are expenditures and their corresponding funding sources that'll support them. And then finally, same 330 million that we have planned for next year. This is just breaking down what it's going to be spent on. So you can see transportation is the largest category, pretty healthy distribution amongst the categories there. And before I move on, I'll just pause for any questions because now I was going to pivot to an update on our 2017 penny education campaign list. Kind of going to give status updates. Yes, sir?
One quick question. That general fund of 29.2 million, is that the money that we've?
Yes, sir.
Are those the capital projects from the millage increases?
Yeah, the, the money left over at the end of last year, yes. Yeah. That we, that we moved forward in an amendment, March, I believe it was March.
The answer is it's, it's to the transportation trust fund, correct?
No, so that.
No, it's correct.
That 29 million is two things. It's the funding that you approved in March for the additional admin services projects, and then the North County Service Center, 20, 25 million of it is getting started next year for construction. And that is general fund transfer from a previous year.
Okay.
And, and just, just to answer the question as well, what, what you're talking about, Commissioner, is to the transportation trust fund. You would not see it in, in here. You would see it over there.
Okay. And, and we wouldn't see it in the, the increased, the millages that we increased to identify capital projects?
Those are fully over in transportation trust fund.
Okay. Those are, excuse me.
Yeah, we kept them isolated.
Okay, thanks.
So next, 2017 education campaign. Just want to give you a couple of status updates. In your backup, you'll see this. This is the original education campaign document. We've also included a document called Projects Identified During 2017 Education Campaign. And that's essentially a status update or a report card. Basically, if you had something specifically called out on that 2017 list, it's going to give you a status update of where it is. Is it completed in design, going to construction, et cetera? So it's, it's essentially a status update for all 2017 list projects. I did want to give you an update. So again, we thought we were going to spend or collect 915 million in revenue back in 2017. Take a look at today. So these are the categories. You have 2017, 2023, 2024. You can see there's not much difference between 2023 and 2024, but you can see a lot has changed between community vitality and roads and bridges between 2024 and 2017. What I'll point out is that's not necessarily the whole picture. We are spending a lot more money on roads and bridges. That's true. We're not necessarily spending a lot less money on community vitality. It's just community vitality has alternative funding sources now, of which general fund, for example. And so if you bake that back into the equation, community vitality actually goes back up to 18%. So each of these categories, we're, we're pretty much on the mark, spending what we anticipated we would. We're just spending more in roads and bridges. We're able to do that because of ARPA funding, additional millage funding and alternative funding sources for community vitality.
I'm not quite sure I get that piece. So you're, what is baked into community vitality? What are, what are those kinds of things that we're talking about? At the end of the day, this is what we, this is what our residents asked for. We promised them, you vote for the penny. This is how we're going to break it out, right? This is how we're going to estimate spending the money. We're saying we're doing that. We're doing it through other sources of funds.
We are. What's up on the screen is really penny-specific.
Right.
A lot of community vitality is now not funded by penny, about half of it, actually. If you bake that back in, it would be 18%. Community vitality specifically was called out as community centers, libraries, recreational facilities, government facilities and community projects. And so a lot of those received ARPA funding, received general fund transfers.
Grants, anything like that. And, but everything on the 2017 list is in our plan. Okay? And is, is in our capital plan, yeah.
Not in necessary penny, but in the capital.
Correct. And on top of that, you do have some additional requests that came in after the 2017. And you can see, as we get towards the end, we're going to look at whether we can include some of those or not, you know? So, thank you.
And then finally, we just wanted to give you an update on a couple of projects that are crossing over that penny four mark into penny five. So for example, Spring Branch, construction scheduled for FY '31 and '32, but I want to point out that other improvements have been made in the area, specifically Sunset Point Road drainage improvements, Douglas Ave, bridge culvert replacement. So there is work being done. It's just more times needed to pursue partnerships with municipalities. And again, that would be included in your status update, report card document. So next, you have Pine Brook Canal. It was placed on hold. I will mention that last year, we communicated it was a beyond FY '30 project. It's been placed on hold since because we need more time to pursue partnership with the city of Largo and identify funding. So that's just the status update. It's not to say it won't come back. It's just more times needed to pursue a partnership. Chenanga Ave and Sadiva Circle, it was placed on hold and removed from the plan. We are working with the city of Clearwater to take over this project because it's primarily within the city of Clearwater limits. Not to say we won't have a coordination effort there, but it is, it has been removed from the plan. Belcher Road at Gulf Bay Intersection Improvement. So this hasn't been removed from the plan, but a little bit of a change. So FDOT is going to complete a corridor study, and they're going to take over design and construction. We have left some allocation within this decade. We don't know what our contribution will be. We don't know when it'll be. So we've left some of it alone. And then some of it is in the outer years. But just to give you a status update on that, FDOT is going to do a corridor study and kind of lead the way on that. Did it change? Yeah. 126 Ave, this project, last year, we communicated most of construction was programmed beyond FY '30. That still remains true. We just wanted to mention that. That still remains true. And then part of its acquisition is reflected as funding source to be determined. So no real status update there. I actually don't know if that actually changed. I think year over year, it's identical to the way it was last year. We just want to communicate it to you. East Lake Road Corridor, just to give you a status update, this was originally one project. We always knew we were going to break it into multiple projects, right? For project management, for phasing. So that's what's happening. So you have the main project, East Lake Corridor, the A project, scheduled for 2029 construction. You then have East Lake Road Bridges over Brooker Creek, construction scheduled for FY '27. Those are two very, I shouldn't say tiny bridges, but if you blink, you'll miss them and you might not even know you're driving over bridges. They're about a mile north of the Tampa Road Bridges. Next, you have the McMullen Booth Road Bridges over Tampa Road, scheduled for 2029. And then finally, you have that exit ramp if you're heading northbound on McMullen Booth over the Outfall Canal, scheduled for 2027.
I certainly hope you can blink while we're driving through the construction and not notice it.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be a mess.
Yeah. And then finally, we also have Keystone Road and East Lake Road Emergency Access. It's actually an intersection improvement, construction scheduled for FY '26. So a lot being done in that corridor. Just wanted to communicate to you how it's being broken out and managed.
Commissioners, this will be a major impact on our capital plan depending upon the outcome of how we do the phasing of this, success with state grants, which, you know, Senator Hooper has prioritized. And so, you know, there'll be a lot more discussion on this. But as you can see, this is a lot of money, 155 million, you know, total for this entire project and so, you know.
For the East Lake?
For everything, yeah. Is that, am I correct, Kelly?
For what is the East Lake project?
This is the entire corridor for about $155 million.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, no? Mona, Mona's going to yell at me because I probably got it wrong, but. Oh, jeez, okay. A lot of money. And so, you know, this is going to be multiple pennies probably. We're going to have to see our success with the state, but we're going to have to come up with a phasing plan. And, and so that's what we're kind of just in discussions and stuff now. But this will have a major impact on our penny, right? Depending upon that phase and which penny it goes into, this penny or next penny. So a lot more discussion on this project.
Intersection, intersection work and technology work can happen.
Correct.
In that, because those, those will solve a lot of the problems.
You can do bridges. You can do technology. You can do intersections. You know, you're, you're 100% correct, Commissioner, and, and get a lot of throughput on that corridor and make that corridor work better before you actually get to the widening.
Agreed.
Sometime in the future.
Commissioner Valhalla's question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For Belcher and Gulf Bay, I know that FDOT is really handling that now, but do we know if they are looking at the Michigan or Ohio U-turn still?
Do not call that an Ohio U-turn.[1781.61]
Or whatever it's called. The thing that's very hard to understand, and I had three meetings, and I still don't understand the concept.
I'm not sure, but we can find out an answer and get it back to you.
Kelly, the answer's yes.
I have a big voice. I didn't think I was going to need a mic. Yes, so DOT wants to look at the corridor all the way from Rocky Point out to the beach. And they have, we have given them everything that we've done to date, which includes the preliminary engineering report that has the alternatives analysis for every, for that intersection and the recommendation. So that will be included in their evaluation. What they ultimately recommend may be different.
Thank you.
And so finally, we have Anclot Road. We've programmed in construction scheduled for FY '31 through '34. Previously, it wasn't reflected. It is an outer-year estimate, so it won't actually appear in your six-year plan because, again, scheduled for '31, but that's now reflected in there.
Has that been moved? Has it always been in what would be considered Penny V?
So previously, we only had about $8 million allocated to it, which upon further review is only going to get you really through design. Construction wasn't reflected last year, and so this is the first time it's being reflected. And it has been put to an outer year to, correct me if I'm wrong, Mona, but to allow for a PD&E design, and then eventually it'll-
But we do have design in this current penny?
Design and PD&E funding, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That hasn't changed?
That hasn't changed, no.
Okay.
And so just to review, Capital Projects Fund is balanced. FY '24, more importantly, is balanced. 2017 Penny Education Campaign, we gave you a document with updates in it to review on your leisure. Revenue estimates have been updated, and project estimates have been updated and baked into the forecast. And so I don't have anything else for you if there's any questions.
Any other questions, further discussion? Okay.
Drew's off to a great start as he replaces Jackie. And so the entire team, they've really been engaged. They've been out on site, looking at projects, working with our departments. So they're really doing a great job on our Capital Projects team.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
That concludes the reviews that we have for today. We'll do a modified schedule based upon being able to advance some of the ones that were scheduled for next week to today, and we'll send that out to you. And we have obviously a commission meeting on Tuesday, and we have additional hearings on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Okay. And before we go, I want to wish Pete Brossey in the back, happy birthday to you, Pete, the voice from above. And also, I want to thank Deputy Butterfield, Deputy Manley, again, for their service. We appreciate all you do for our community. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.